...April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call.
Honor person, Burgraff.
Here, I will be a voting member tonight.
Honor person, King, Banker, Boonstruck.
Here.
Brundike.
Here.
Mask.
Here.
And Campton.
Here.
Wilkin.
Here.
Ladies and legends.
Ladies and legends to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have presentations on the list today, but I do have one request to speak. I thought I'd let her go first before we dip into the presentation. Julie?
Okay. So I am just coming for our yearly approval for the bike blessing, which will be June first, Sunday, June first. We're asking for closure, same as last year, ten till, I believe it was four. And you know, if it gets done earlier, of course, we'll pick up. If we can get the barricades dropped off like we usually do, we'll be doing the same places. And I'll have the area blocked off with either a vendor or the barricades. And I think I got all the paperwork in this time because it's a little bit new. I have to go get the insurance yet, so I will do that and get that back to them. Bates is going to cover that for us this year, which is really nice. I went to that meeting yesterday, so that'll help out a lot. But I gotta get the paperwork from him to them to her, so. So with your guys' help, I hope that we can make this another successful blessing. I know the bridge is going to be downed at that time, but I'm still hoping it'll still be okay.
What's the year for you, Julie?
This is the thirty-sixth year.
Thirty-sixth?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll bring some flyers in. We can maybe get that in the windmill letter or whatever. And Fulton letter would be great. June first. Sunday, June first. Blessing actually starts at one o'clock. We, I'm going under Dave Johnny's drum shop, so anybody has to, we'll be carting and watching everybody, make sure that everything stays right in that area. So nothing's really changed. It'll be pretty much the same.
Any questions for Julie? Awesome. We look forward to another successful one.
Cool. Thank you, guys, really. I love the hall. And thank you for everything.
Be good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Shannon from MSA to go over our comprehensive plan, strategic plan. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Well, first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to discuss the vision for a strategic plan and comprehensive plan for the city of Fulton, Illinois. We recently put together a scope of services for this exact project, and we are excited to be here tonight to go through kind of how and why this will benefit the community. So with that, in terms of presentation outline, we'll start with a short little introduction, go over the importance of planning, what strategic planning is, as well as what comprehensive planning is, and why they're both important. Do a quick overview of the project's scope and the objectives and elements, talk a little bit about the timeline and deliverables, and then end with a short conclusion that includes some next steps and hopefully some questions. So in terms of introduction, community planning is essentially shaping the physical growth of a community as it continues to expand and evolve. It helps identify and secure funding for things like parks and trails and facade improvements and so on to improve your community. It increases economic development opportunities to help put your best foot forward and improves quality of life for citizens, most importantly. Going a little further into what strategic planning is, kind of the difference is strategic planning is more short-range planning, so it's really looking at the core mission and vision of the community. It identifies priorities, communicates the plan, and provides a systematic process for setting goals and activities to reach that desired future. Importantly, it is an important step before comprehensive planning, capital improvement planning, and annual budgeting. So that is why we're recommending the strategic plan first. And then comprehensive planning, it goes by many different names. It can be a general plan, a master plan. It focuses on land use, but it has the long-range goals and visions and objectives. It makes sure that the future land use and growth is consistently the vision for the community. And it's important to note that it's not a zoning ordinance, it's not subdivision regulations, but it's essentially a guide for the long-term range goals of the community. So in terms of project overview, this is straight in our outline, but our goal is to create better places to live and work, and we really hope to do that through assisting Fulton with the best and most appropriate solutions. For us, it's more than a project, it's a commitment to you and your community. In terms of your needs, we really hope to improve the community and attract additional growth. We want to put together some steps to meet the goals of the community and then have this five-year guide that helps serve as a strategic plan for the community. A little bit more about the strategic plan growth. It's broken down into kind of four different tasks, starting with discovery and engagement. We'll put together a survey that looks at things like public safety, economic development, the marina, finance and tourism, personnel, and parks and recreation. Next, we'll look at things like goals, objectives, and prioritization. We'll draft the plan and come up with the CIP document, and then review and revise as needed to come to that adoption level. It would include three different city council workshops, and then we would move into the comprehensive plan aspect, and this is a little more in-depth. So we would be looking closely at future land use, thinking about the next twenty years, thinking about the evolving needs of the community as the demographic change and grow. So we'd be looking at future trends, engaging the community in multiple different ways to get diverse perspectives and aspirations, and then focus on things like land use, parks and recreation, transportation, infrastructure, economic development, and implementation. The comprehensive plan scope also has four different phases, starting with the kickoff and engagement, and this is where we would really work with and engage the community. We would have a project website, community survey. We have these pop-up booths where we attend a existing festival or farmer's market, something going on in the community that's already planned for, and show up right where the people already are. We would put together survey handouts and promotional flyers and then create what we call a community profile. Phase two is drafting the plan, including the action plan matrix for implementation, and then reviewing and revising that document as needed to come to adoption with all the final deliverables. It would include a lot of different community elements, including intergovernmental cooperation, transportation, economic development, and tourism. All these things listed here, as well as the goals and strategies that go along with each of them. In terms of timeline and deliverables, the strategic plan would be much quicker. We're looking at roughly four months, so kind of one month for each of those different tasks. And then, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan is a little more in-depth, so that would be kind of months five through twelve, looking at kind of a year-long process for all these different elements, from kickoff and engagement to the draft plan, revisions, and adoption. In conclusion, we would develop a guide that's consistent for future growth, create goals and policies that are supported by data and public input. We'd make sure that existing development regulations are consistent with the new comprehensive plan, and of course, we would have multiple opportunities for public participation with a variety of engagement activities. If we were to move forward with this, kind of the next steps would include creating kind of a planning committee that could serve as project ambassadors, promote all the different public engagement tools that we talked about, communicate with community members, and reading and reviewing some of the materials that we put together. We would have them, if possible, promote and attend different community outreach events, but most importantly, focus on and strive for consensus. Once again, if we do move forward with this, we would do what we call a SWOT analysis. It stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And with that process, we often look at things like development, mobility, culture, and beautification. Overall, we would ask different questions about the growth and challenges of the community, if there's opportunities for redevelopment, how we can improve the community character, what's great about Fulton and what will be in twenty years, and then what obstacles there are to overcome. We'd look at things like attracting families and what needs to be protected about Fulton. Most importantly, we just want to stress the importance of planning. It helps anticipate and shape change for the benefit of the community. It serves as a basis for implementation for things like design guidelines and funding. And most importantly, it helps create a well-planned community that's attractive and is a great place to live and work. Any questions for us?
So I see that you recommend obviously doing both. Do you see communities that do strictly the comprehensive plan versus the strategic plan combo?
We do. Generally, we recommend both, but it's always important to do the strategic plan before the comprehensive plan.
Second one goes much easier if you have the first one.
Yes, exactly.
It sets the stage.
Yep. Really focuses on that mission first and the values, and then dives into goals, objectives, and strategies with the comp plan.
And then the strategic plan, if you end up, you know, in month twelve and the comprehensive plan doesn't really align with your strategic plan, that's something that's, you know, constantly updated.
Yep.
I love the community outreach part because that's what we're here for.
Great, yes.
To serve the community and their needs and requests and things like that. So I like that they're involved in this process.
Glad to hear it. Yes. Their feedback definitely helps guide the document itself.
towns around here, have you guys done this planning tour?
I've actually got a link here. I don't know if it'll, I don't think I have it open, but this is a link that you can check out that shows different comprehensive plans that we've done all across the Midwest. So you're welcome to take a look at those, but I know Tara works specifically in this region a little bit more than I do.
We assisted Whiteside County a few years ago in updating their comprehensive plan. We, last year or almost two years ago, we wrapped up Joe Davis County's comprehensive plan. So those were kind of county-wide, much bigger planning efforts. But in terms of community-wide, we haven't done a ton in Whiteside County, but we've worked a lot in kind of closer to our champagne office. We've done Goodfield, Illinois, smaller towns, smaller than Fulton. We've also done a strategic plan and a comprehensive plan in Carlock, Illinois.
I've worked on several parks and recreation plans as well, so I've worked on one for the city of Moline. I'm working on a park plan for Leclerc. We did one for Savoy, Illinois. And then I do a lot of plans throughout all of Iowa, so.
Is it possible to piecemeal plan? Like, can we decide that there's certain areas we want to focus on and maybe not do a full?
I think that's possible, yeah.
Something considerate.
Yep. Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you.
Next up is our consent agenda to approve regular meeting minutes for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and approve the bill list and addenda to the bill list. Make a motion.
Motion.
Roll call when you're ready, Tori.
I had, I just had a question. Tori, on the end of the minutes there, we entered the closed session at seven oh five, but we didn't come out, and then we didn't come back into the public meeting. Just a little closure there at the, at the end of the minutes.
I'll review it and.
Yeah, correct. Stayed in till now. We went in at seven oh five.
I got a question on my bill list. We had a couple payments to simple grants, and I just wondered if we're using them? Are we not using them?
There is a fee for a monthly meeting. I did request their help also in doing the performance reports for the digital science grant that we got. So that was a cost, too.
Okay. So is it something that is regularly used or just as, if we use them, then we get a bill?
Yeah, if we use them, we'll get a bill. I won't give their help with the grant reports anymore, but if we do a monthly meeting or if she requests hours to do a work in for a grant that she's found, those would be billable costs.
So do we pay a retainer fee every year or not?
No.
Only when we use them?
Yep.
Okay.
And then one more I had was T D G Communications, that's our website host. Is that still our host since we have a new website?
I believe so.
No. So we have a different designer, and so we have a different web host than our designer.
Isn't that his company?
I'll check into that.
And then I was curious if it's a monthly thing or if that was an annual fee?
That would be annual.
Oh, okay. I was, all right. I just wanted to make sure because I was like, um, that's really high. I don't think that's a monthly thing, so. And if we switched, maybe that's a fee we shouldn't be paying anymore, so I just wanted to check.
Anything else?
Honor person, Banker, King, Mask, Ben Campton.
Yes.
Boonstruck.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Brundike.
Yes.
Burgraff.
Yes. Next item is a motion to approve and vote for new liquor license fees and license classifications.
Boonstruck.
Second.
Do you want to speak to that, Renee?
Well, yes.
She's just so happy to be back.
Well, first of all, I wanted to say I appreciate all the work everybody put into it, the committee and everything that we've been working on for this. The reason that you have one of the amended ordinances there at your desk is I highlighted it for you on the second to the last page. We had added that not only do we want an in-person presentation, we also want it in writing. So that's what we added to it from your packet. And I didn't know if there were any questions from anybody. Or Rebecca did a great job. It's very clear-cut. It's easy to read. I think you'll find it very easy to read, so. Also, if you look at the temporary license, page three, we aligned that with our new special event application, so it has the forty-five days prior. And we were working on that as Julie was doing her blessing of the bike. That's why she has a little more time because it was hard for her to get in the forty-five days because we were working on everything. So we're working with her on that. Also, we were able to add in there, second to the last page, there were, we add the written presentation. We also put what we would like them to tell us in person about their business plan. And this will be required for your A and your B-one licenses that are able to get the video gaming, so.
And you just want to clarify for everybody, Renee, about how we want the presentation, but they're not going to come here and we're not going to be voting on.
Right, this is.
We'll only vote if we're changing another license.
Yes, if you're going to increase the license. Yeah. And we do have that. It's, it's clear in here.
Yes.
About, you know, if one is revoked or suspended.
That is something Rebecca added, correct? That was a really great idea on her part, that when someone gives one up, it doesn't mean one's open to avoid any of the confusion.
And then we reevaluate.
Yes. Yeah. I think you'll find it very clear and easy to read, so.
At that point, we need to come back to the council. The council can either reoffer it, so do they open up or vote to reduce the number of licenses at that point?
Yeah.
And then one other thing we did add that wasn't in the one you saw in the last packet is we put an expiration date on applications, so they're only open for a year.
Yeah.
They have to come back and reapply. That way we don't have those zombie applications that have been sitting there for four or five years that's pretty back to life when one opens up.
Sure.
Yes.
So if a person's really interested, they're going to have to keep coming back and reapplying.
And compliments to Renee on the issue.
Very patient.
Brought a lot of knowledge with it, and so I'm grateful.
Thank you.
To Renee and the committee, thank you. Anything else before the roll call? Tori, go ahead.
Honor person, Banker, King, Mask.
Yes.
Ben Campton.
Yes.
Boonstruck.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Brundike.
Yes.
Burgraff.
Yes. All right. Next up is motion to approve and vote on the Ryan Eisen's construction project. Eisen's Construction will pay for and install a new road on the property of his construction site. The city will reimburse Eisen's by paying him three payments of sixteen thousand each in October twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. And I understand you want to speak to that motion.
So we don't have the ordinance quite ready yet, so this would just be proving that the city is going to move forward with our portion of it pending the contract being approved at the next meeting. So we should have everything ready to go for the next meeting. Ryan's got a survey done. I'm just waiting on the legal description of the road and the easement. And then once we have all that, then we can, we can move forward.
So are we amending this motion or are we just tabling it until you have?
So we're just, we're just voting that the city is going to appropriate the funds pending the contract review at the next meeting.
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Conversation on that?
No, but I'm just real happy that that development's came up.
We do have a sample contract there in this type, so that's what it's going to look like, just with the legal description still needs to be added in.
How many houses?
Four houses. Three townhomes. I don't know if you can see it, but I'll do my best standing. Essentially what it, it will be.
Okay. So you are the single dwelling homes?
On Eleventh Avenue, we'll be single family.
It worked out real well when you came with your original plan and then, you know, Big Terry and lived in the neighborhood and had some suggestions on positioning and.
Appreciate you taking our feedback.
Yes.
Yes.
Appreciate the feedback. You know, I need as much help as you guys can give me as well.
We're excited about the additional housing in Fulton, so.
Good.
Honor person, Burgraff.
Yes.
Banker. Brundike.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
And Campton.
Yes.
Mask.
Yes.
Boonstruck.
Yes.
King.
Motion to approve and vote on a request to vacate an alley at ten twenty-nine Ninth Avenue for Jeff Brundike.
Actually have a large enough number that has to be by three, fours, so we don't have enough people here tonight to actually vote on that.
Oh, property, property sale? Yep, we don't.
It does have to be done by an ordinance as well, so we can put the ordinance in the next packet.
And the only thing we, we didn't have a chance to talk to Jeff about was the fifteen hundred dollars just to make sure he was okay with that. So as long as he's okay with that, then we can proceed.
Then in addition to the sixty of eight for the application, would it be fourteen forty plus?
No, that'll be addition.
You don't get no benefits.
How did you arrive at that number?
That was set by a previous board. I don't know where that number came from.
So that's just a standard?
Essentially, it covers our closing cost from what I understand, so.
Do we need to motion to table that or we can just table it? All right. Table. Motion to approve and vote to remove administrative penalties from the general fund to Fund sixty-one. Eric, do you want to speak on that or? Well, I'm sorry.
Boonstruck.
Second.
So will it be changed in moving forward then that those fees coming in will be going into?
Yes, they'll go straight to the police department.
Have that already been adjusted?
Yeah, we just got a, we just.
Yeah, essentially what this will do is this will allow us to start putting the money into Fund sixty-one, because right now, the way it's set up, it all just goes into our general fund. So this allows us to take the seventy-seven thousand, move it over to Fund sixty-one, and then from now on, any admin tow fees will go directly into Fund sixty-one. And I just want to add that, like I talked about, with the original conversation that I had with everybody was the eighty-one thousand, six hundred. I did it, myself and Eric did a little audit just to find out if any money had been spent. I found a few transactions that I couldn't determine whether or not they were already withdrawn, so I'm just going to withdraw them anyways. And then we're going to change that amount from the eighty-one, six, twenty-seven, seventy-five to seventy-seven, five, eighty-three, ninety-eight. I think that's, that's fair because like I said, I wouldn't want to, if it was already taken out, I just, there was no record of it, so I just wanted to make sure that it was fair on the side of caution and make sure it was fair for the city and for the police department.
I'll be thanking for the breakdown of your plans for funds to. Anything else on that topic?
Honor person, Boonstruck.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Banker. Mask.
Yes.
Burgraff.
Yes.
Ben Campton.
Yes.
King. Brundike.
Yes.
Motion to approve and vote on a resolution to adopt and allocate funds for an outdoor fitness court as part of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six National Fitness Campaign.
I'll second that.
It's exciting. I like this.
It is.
We open for discussion?
Yep.
Thanks. Where are we sitting at in Harps and Rex Funds? Because I'm assuming that's where this will come from?
Well, I have the exact number in front of me, but I want to say it's around two hundred and fifty thousand?
In addition to the grant?
No, no, no. This, this is just what we have in our, our.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So we're still sitting okay there?
Yes, and actually, as our committee, we had a few meetings already this year. The meeting minutes just got in this packet here, but we aren't doing anything huge this year. We're going to do like a lot of maintenance items at Canyon, kind of get everything there. We hope up to par by the end of the year, let that grow again this year, that fund.
Sure.
And then hopefully next year, be able to dip into it for this. That was kind of our plan, right?
Yeah, I mean, so I am going to apply for another grant through Timken. And if we are approved for that, this may happen this year, but that is pending our grant approval through that, so.
Separate from simple grants, we just go direct to Timken for that?
Yep. And that's, that's the same one we, we received when we did the Tenth Avenue Park. So this, this sixty thousand actually comes from Illinois Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is a major insurance company, and it's more geared toward bettering your community in outdoor fitness and health and walking and running. And we were awarded the highest amount that they give, so that was a good thing for us. So kind of with our plan with that is where this is going to go, which will be down by our municipal lot down on First Street, Ninth Avenue. We are planning on adding pickleball courts down there. So this is part of a bigger picture of everything we are going to do in that area. So just so everybody kind of had a little idea of what, what's in the works for that area of town.
Nice to see an insurance company take interest that they're willing to move some money back to the community to better people's lives.
We had a lot of interest in pickleball courts when we were working on the Tenth Avenue Park.
I hear it all the time.
And we just didn't want, heard they're kind of loud.
No.
In the residential, so.
Terry would have vetoed that.
So when this came up, Eric said, oh, what about the pickleball courts down there? We thought, yes, that's a great location, and there's already the parking lot down there. And then we also wanted to add lights, so it would be able to be used in the evening, especially in the summer, spring, fall evenings.
So this motion is essentially to allocate those funds at this time?
So allocating amount of. So this is, is, this is saying that we are going to accept the sixty thousand dollars from Blue Cross Blue Shield through the National Fitness Campaign. And then we have until June twelfth to figure out where our funds would come from to, you know, come up with the rest of the money. So we kind of already know where we're going to take the funds from, but they give you a little bit of time to, you know, do your research on things.
Well, we're just accepting the grant money.
We're just accepting at this point the sixty thousand dollars from the Blue Cross Blue Shield National Fitness Campaign.
And we are, I guess, kind of committing that if we don't get another grant, then we are.
Yeah.
We can cover the rest of the bill.
Is this some face would be an opportunity for us?
Potentially.
You know.
I don't, but yeah, I guess I don't know that we would qualify for that.
I think they're small. I think gorgeous. They ever give it like five grand, which, I mean.
Oh, okay.
Five thousand is the max.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay. I'll stop bringing them up every time.
We're kind of out of that range.
Yeah.
Everything we do here.
It's great for like beautification projects, you know, if there's like. It's great for like, uh, beauty vacation projects, um, you know, if there's like landscaping, those type of things, and all they like to come out of that.
They do wonderful things for us, so to be as, um, pointing at your computer, we need to electronic people.
Okay, story. Other person, Mass?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Baker? Brandeck?
Yes.
King? Wilkin?
Yes.
And Campton?
Yes.
Boonstra?
Yes.
All right, back here onto the committee of the whole discussion items. Uh, first up is the Marina Building ninety-day lease.
So, uh, we have discussed in past meetings, um, about the potential of the Police Department moving down to the old Marina Building. Um, if that is something we are, uh, still considering, we have a ninety-day clause in there for us to get out of that contract if we so choose. But also, you know, we're not looking at doing anything until twenty-twenty-six. So I would say, you know, if, if the council chooses to move forward with, uh, the plans that Chad's come up with for that building down there, um, you know, we could give them a year, a one-year lease until April of next year. Uh, that gives them a year to, to find another place to move off to. So i- if, if the council's still looking at that being the new, uh, Police Department area, that's kinda where we need to know if, if we still are looking at that, or if me and Chad need to go back to the drawing board.
I think we were waiting on that Marina appraisal, right?
Eh, so, I was told I will have it by the end of this week. We'll see if that happens, but that's what I was told.
You should have it this week?
At the end of this week.
I think I agree with many, that's just a critical piece that we have to make a decision what we're gonna do.
Yeah, and that's fine, yeah, we just need to know where we're, where we're at with it, so.
I'm just so hesitant to use Riverside property for a storage check. Like, I know that it is, that is what it is right now, but I, I would hate to invest money into a structure that is such a beautiful, valuable location to our city.
I agree with Jackie, I think anytime we can preserve like we're doing with the riverfront property, um, just north of the windmill, where the public gets to benefit of, of use that. I, I would agree, looks like Qantas Park always being there, people could use it in the sun.
Absolutely.
I would agree with that, I think it's, um, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Very important that we keep that.
It's definitely, uh, you know, up to the council, we're just, you know, bringing ideas to you. You know, we're just trying to come up with an idea for next year, so.
So where are we at with the lease right now, it expires in May?
It expires in August.
And we would be giving them ninety days.
No, so we have ninety days to let them know if we're not going to renew the lease or not.
What is that, lease a month?
Seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Any idea how many square feet that is?
Not off the top of my head.
Pretty good size of building.
Yeah, I wanna say, I had to throw a number at, I would guess somewhere around four thousand square feet is my guess. I mean, they're, they're getting a, a very good deal, um, on the size of building that they're in.
May I have you say the whole thing?
Well, let's hope we get the Marina information.
I mean, I've heard that in the past, but we'll see if I actually get it.
Hold your breath, correct.
Yeah.
Well, we waited a long time just to find someone who would.
It is, yes.
Is, is it urgent that, that, that the police has, uh, storage for the park?
Well, it would be a whole new police department, it wouldn't be just the.
You would move everything that's here. Okay.
I mean, it's not like life or death, we need to have an answer like tomorrow, but, you know, it, it's more if we, if we need to let them know to start looking for a new place. You know, I don't wanna say, hey, you only got ninety days and you gotta get out of here, I don't. Trying to, you know, make a, a valiant effort to, they have all the time in the world to find somewhere else to go. Um, but, you know, if, if it's of the council's opinion, they wanna keep that property, then me and Chad will go back to square one and we'll see where else we can go.
Year-to-year lease?
Uh, so this last one was a three-year lease that we did. So we could, I mean, we can make the lease whenever we want.
That's what I wonder.
And we could.
I think that'd be a smart decision regardless of what we do, because of.
We could make it a, a one-year lease and I'll just go year-to-year after that.
I don't know if anyone's seen the facility that they're using now, down by the wastewater treatment plant, but it's, that building at the Marina, as it sits right now, is a huge step up what they're currently in.
Uh, yeah, I, I would encourage anybody to go down there at some point in time and look at the condition of the current storage building.
What's in there?
We, we are, we've, we've been working on it a little bit, but we are having some mice issues, not nothing too bad, where they're starting to tear up here, but we have had big mice in corners. And that's something, I mean, mice, mousetraps and bait ain't gonna, to solve that problem at the sewer plant.
So is the location, cause I have not been there, is that not in a location that it could be added on to and fixed up?
Not with the, not with how close it is to the dike. Because it's actually probably closer to the dike than what it's supposed to be, cause you can only.
Built into the dike.
Yeah, cause you're only supposed to be from the toe of the dike. I think it's, it's either fifteen or twenty feet away and we're into the dike. So, but it also used to be a stall, a salt storage shed, so you probably.
Why still need that?
Uh, I don't know, the deer liked it, but.
And then, with the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, five or so years down the road, that building's going away anyway.
If it makes it out.
So we need a plan.
We need something.
Yeah, it, it, there's definitely a need for it, we just have to figure out, uh, where we're gonna, where we're gonna put that building.
And again, like we had talked, Eric and I had talked hypothetically, the Marina Building, it wouldn't require us to run any new utilities. That would be a huge cost savings for the city, to not to have to run new sewer, new water, new electric, new gas. I mean, that was just one of the benefits of that building for, for whatever we decide.
This is something I thought we were, our plan was that each police officer would have his own car.
But not all of them would, not all of them would be able to take them home.
Okay.
Yeah.
So some will.
Yeah, they, they would still sleep within the.
They have a place to park it.
Yeah, and we would be able to protect the vehicle by having them indoors.
Will you let those who take them home?
Some will, yeah, they'll, yeah.
I thought I understood that, that everybody was gonna have their own car.
Yeah, we will, they will, but, you know.
They all, but they all won't be able to take them home, is what you're saying?
We'll have to discussion at the next meeting.
Did you have information, more information, like how much have you dug into the building, like do you have any cost estimates on anything?
Chad's got the last stuff, so you wanna sit down with us?
I got quotes.
From the last meeting.
Was it presented, okay, I apologize, I was.
I also got a grant in for Timken for a hundred thousand dollars as well, so this would cover a large portion of everything we need to get done.
Yeah, I'll have to get with you on it.
Okay, well, I think we'll table that to the next and have more discussion out at the next meeting in hopes that the Marina appraisals come in and decide if we wanna go to a one-year lease option and go from there. All right, cannabis business registration fees. Not sure who's speaking on that tonight.
Guess I will.
Your nominee.
So we've talked about it in past meetings, uh, right now, we have what is called a cannabis license fee. We cannot charge a license fee to, um, Dan Nolan because, um, we are not able to issue licenses. Now, we can charge a business registration fee or a cannabis business registration fee, um, to him, and he has paid that in the past. So, um, what we are proposing is to implement this and, and reword it to where we're not gonna get in trouble from the state, you know, with the way it's currently worded. So, right now, I think it's ten thousand dollars per license, which Dan Nolan has, he has a transportation license and he has a, a craft grower license. Um, and then he has his license for, uh, the dispensary itself. So we have three licenses, um, that we can charge for, um, but, you know, we just need to change the wording on it and then, you know, is everybody okay with the fees, do we need, you know, I, we've talked in the past about upping the fees, but, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get, you know, charging too much, because then, you know, it looks like you're trying to gouge somebody, but we, you know, we wanna be fair to him as well, so.
Um, Keith had asked Sue and I to do a little research on that, because we had been involved with it right from the beginning, and we just haven't been able to get together these last two weeks, but we did start and, and we think there's a potential for six. We need to confirm.
So, I, so I've been in contact with, uh, the Department of Agriculture, they are the ones who issue the licenses. Um, and that's the number I got from them, is, is the three.
Oh, the three, oh, okay.
So, the state issues the license, we collect the fee, my understanding?
No, so we can charge a fee, a business.
So he's gonna hit, get hit twice, he's gonna have to pay.
He already, he already had to pay for the license anyways, but this is a fee for us, um, to collect for him having cannabis in.
Yeah, okay.
We should.
In all cities do it, Jackie, all cities do it.
Sure.
Yeah, they put the price on it.
Yeah, okay.
But there's, um, three other ones that we got from, that we can add on to that, according to the book that we received.
What do you mean?
There's a total of six that we can charge him, according to the book that we received, that we can charge.
If, if he has those licenses, but he does not.
He grows.
He does not have those other licenses. He only has the transportation license and the craft grower license. So we can only charge on the licenses that he actually physically holds in his hand.
There's one for dispensing.
Right, but I, I'm talking, um, cause there's one for an infuser, um, there's one for, um, cultivation, but he doesn't meet the requirements of a cultivation center, um, so that's where the craft grower comes in, because it's based off the square footage of the building. Uh, so he, he is under the fourteen thousand square foot, um, threshold for, um, the cultivation center. So he, he falls into the craft grower, but he is not, he does not, as the last time I talked with Department of Agriculture, he does not have an infuser license yet, none, maybe he's not getting one, I don't know. Um, but we can't charge for the cultivation license, because he doesn't, he doesn't hit those requirements. So, um, I'm drawing a blank as to what the other one is.
Growth, growing infusion, which he doesn't do that yet.
Yeah, at least.
Dispensing?
Dispensing, yes, you can charge for that one, cause he does have a dispensing license.
Is there any way, like, does he have projected incomes that we could just say, what's a percentage, what percentage of his revenue do we want?
Basing, um, right now going off of, you know, okay, so we get three percent of, uh, uh, sales out there right now, so, you know, you take that number and, I mean, it's, it's up there, and well, well, into the millions, so.
I heard millions a month, so I'm sitting here thinking, is ten thousand enough?
We're getting three percent.
We don't think so, we don't think so.
We're, we're getting three percent, so.
On, right, but then.
Sales tax.
Is the fee, is ten thousand as a fee enough?
Any other ones to go off of, like other communities, there's nothing really to gauge it against?
Well, so that, some other communities have this business registration or the cannabis registration fee, but they're all home. And we don't fall under those guidelines unfortunately, so you could probably go off of them, but I don't know how well that.
Do you know if they're aligned with the ten thousand?
I'd have to look them back, I, Rebecca, do you remember what those were?
The ones I saw, that was in line with the ten thousand, I think there was one that was seventy-five hundred.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're out of line, I mean, he's paid it in the past with where we're at right now, so.
It's just a hard thing to gauge, because in my mind, like, we could bump it up to fifteen, but what are we basing that off of, I don't know.
Right, and so, yeah, you, you guys would just have to come, come up with the number that everybody's comfortable with and.
So he has been paying a ten thousand dollar fee?
He has paid it in the past, yes.
On which licenses?
Uh, he'd only paid it on the dispensing, he only paid the ten thousand.
So then, I don't think it'd be out of line to say, all right, we're increasing it to twelve-five or something?
He should be paying it on both recreational and medical.
He can't be charged on the medical.
He was the first time.
Though, we've only collected ten thousand from him.
When he first opened up, we collected ten thousand from him on the medical.
I.
He didn't have recreational.
Rebecca, but I don't think we were supposed to charge for that, I don't, I don't think we could. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we were supposed to. Not as.
Well, we, we definitely wanna try to do the fees, we just have to figure out how much.
I think some of the conversations I've had with, with Barb and Sue and some other people, is, uh, increase net to fifteen thousand per license, and then was possibly going to do a fee for the bakery as well.
And is the Department of Agriculture, did they give them a license? Or did they have any license?
So they're, we're gonna.
Now, so we.
They have a dispensing license, what's their?
I don't remember what their license is, I'd have to pull the information again, but we are looking into what they, what their profits are at this point, um, cause, you know, I don't, I don't feel it would be right for us to charge them ten thousand dollars and they're only bringing in, I wanna say, forty thousand, you know, I'm just throwing numbers out there, but, so we are looking into what they're bringing in, so that we, you know, we, we all feel that they should pay something, because they are, um, regulated by Department of Agriculture, so, um, it's just what that fee would be, that's the only part we don't know yet. So we're waiting from the state, if I'm right, to get those numbers.
Oh, the state's gonna provide the income numbers, I was gonna ask, are they willingly gonna give those to us?
Uh, so, yeah, this all come from the IRS, so.
They'll provide sales tax, yes.
So what we, what our portion of it is.
Well, and if we went to like a percentage of, but, are they, when do they start collecting, are they actively open yet?
Who, who's that?
The.
The growth facility.
What's it called?
Uh, the growth facility, I mean, they are actively growing, if you drive by, you'll smell it.
And they're like selling and transporting and?
Uh, so they don't, so they're a wholesaler, um, so they can only sell sixty percent of their product to themselves, so the forty percent has to go somewhere else. Um, but from what I can find, we aren't entitled to any of that money, from what I can find. And I, I've looked high and low and I cannot find any.
Sales tax on that.
So.
Pretty much. No, because he's growing it for himself right now.
Probably, I mean, I don't know all the specifics of all that, I just know, um, he can only keep sixty percent to himself, the rest has to go out to, you know, other dispensaries in the area.
Cause I would think that we'd be able to get, I don't know, or if he sold it to other areas.
Yeah, that, that, I've, I've looked and there's nothing, there's nothing out there that says one way or another. And I've looked at other communities that have dispenser, uh, grow facilities and nobody has really any information out there. So that one's kind of a new one for us.
Well, what I was going to suggest was like a percentage based off of their income from last year, so then, we're not pulling arbitrary numbers out, and if they're making, let's just say a million dollar players, I shouldn't point that, but one percent or two percent on that, and they're making forty thousand and then one percent or two percent on that. So then, the fees make sense for.
Sure.
The different people, yeah, and we're not just saying, you get to pay fifteen and eh, you pay three, you know, it, it actually has.
I mean, I can come up with, I can come up with some numbers for the next meeting off of percentages, you know, based off of our past data, and that'll give you a fair representation of what.
Yeah, I just think if we see what they're bringing in, we can make a better educated.
Sure.
Number of what they should be paying the fees.
The state made it easy for us when we initially went into this, because they said you can charge up to three percent. We could've gone one percent, two percent, and we decided to go the three percent, cause we were getting into this to make money. To augment the public services for the people of Fulton, and so we went with the three, and we had to make that decision before we even gave a license to anybody.
Right.
So, turned out, yeah, a good move for us to take the three. Cause I think once you make that decision, you are locked in, yeah.
So we'll plan to have some numbers at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll come up with some numbers for the next one.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Dan. Uh, Dan Dolan for April 28th meeting.
That will be for.
Regarding the B1.
Adding one?
Whether or not you're gonna add a B1 at that point.
So the only thing I would ask about that was, so will he have his in writing? Do we need to request that from him?
I mean, he's already filled out his registration and.
Yeah, he's good to go with everything.
So it's just a vote, so we're just putting it on here to discuss if we want to vote on it.
Right, yeah. It was more or less, we wanted to make sure you guys were still okay with, you know, bringing it to the next meeting to vote with.
We're not actually voting on approving his application, which you're voting on whether you're not.
You're gonna admit.
These number of B1 licenses to two, we don't have one.
So basically, do we want a second gambling den or not?
Right.
Well, I think I shared my opinion on that last time with the five, I think that maybe.
I think it was doing a restaurant.
Yeah, it, his business plan's been confusing to say the least, but it also, I think it's really, the goal is to get a gambling den in there. And my opinion was that for the vision that our town has and the way that we just recently determined the number of licenses, then I don't think it's necessary for us to increase that at this point. But that's just my opinion and I can vote that way when the time comes. But it's just my thought process. And there's plenty of them at that end of town. So I don't even know that it really increases revenue as much as it spreads out where the people go, so.
That's about my point, yeah. Does it increase more?
Well, we should know at the next meeting if our video gaming is increased with the addition of, of Cheers Corners and theirs is up and running, so we should know.
That'd be interesting if you could.
We should know more after that, yeah.
Yeah.
Nope.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I do, I, it was up from what it typically is last month, so.
When you put that in there, you're gonna see the cannabis numbers, broad gaming kind of go up a little bit because they'll spend their money.
Certainly not against the revenue, but there's a balance to that too, I.
Yep.
Drive-through hamburgers, hot dogs and ice cream, yeah. If it's just gonna be for gaming then.
It seemed like that was the underlying of this. It would be nice if it was a fast food drive-through, you know, something in there that anybody could use.
I don't know how these dogs are married.
Okay, we'll put that on at the next one. Anything else on that one? Um, update administrative tow ordinance.
So our administrative tow policy is pretty vague on what we tow for. Like, we can tow for general cannabis violation, controlled substance violation, intoxicated compounds. It's really big and broad. Um, we could tow for driving while licensed, suspended revoked, things that we've already been towing for. State statute allows us to tow for vehicles with suspended registrations. Um, we've, we've got a caveat to that in ours to where we don't just tow for people with suspended registration because that's just bad business. I mean, people sometimes make mistakes and forget to pay a bill or whatever and it gets suspended. Um, but a lot of times what we're coming across is people that whose drivers, uh, there's, their license plates are being suspended for non-insurance. So obviously, they usually have gotten in trouble for not having insurance once. We have, as for the police department, we are actually towing cars now. We can tow it just for that. But we're, we are now towing, if they don't have the, if they're suspended for a mandatory insurance violation and don't possess valid insurance for their vehicle, then we're towing their cars. Um, it's a safety concern for everybody. Everybody's required to have insurance by law. So we, we were just wanting to update, cause there's several other municipalities, if you get an American legal on the online ordinance, so you can check all these other towns. And several other towns have actually lined that out in their ordinance. Um, it, it, it's just an extra level of, of protection for the city when we do tow for suspended registrations and no insurance. Um, it's just an extra level of, to people, because they're in violation of the ordinance, not only in state statute, they're also in violation of the ordinance. It would just be a one line. Um, I'd leave something there already. And I don't know, did, did Rebecca, did he get that to you?
Yes.
So it, it's just a CYA type thing that we just like to add an extra line into our, our, our code that we already have, just to spell things out pretty much crystal clear.
So they would have a fee for the city and?
Yeah, they, they'd be, they would be charged $500 for administrative penalty.
You could pay their insurance premium. They would have to pay the insurance premium than adding the toll.
Like I said, we're, we're doing it now. Um, it's just an extra level of protection for the city that these people are also in violation of ordinance.
So you're recommending?
Yeah, I, yeah, and I can work with Rebecca on getting her all the, all the stuff to that. Like I said, it's, it's not really reinventing the wheel. It just would be adding a, a section that actually specifies what, what the violation is.
Any issues with that? Is an ordinance for the next vote for next meeting?
Several of the major ordinances are enforced, so.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, Chad. All right, on to committee and department head reports. Uh, looks like Park and Rex had two in there. Any questions for them on that?
What, can I add to this? For a so while the department heads report, I'd like to announce that effective May 5th, we have hired another officer. Former officer from the city of Fulton, Kevin Sangson, who is now the chief of police in Fulton, Morrison, will be coming back to Fulton as our deputy chief.
Want to join us on a meeting at that point?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's the week, that week after.
So we'll make nine?
He will make eight?
No, he makes eight.
We still have one more. And if you've seen on social media, that was posted that we are taking applications for laterals right now, so. Um, also Officer Boonstra has been released to solo patrol from his field training. Um, and I expect Officer Munson to be released in the next couple of weeks, so overtime should be about going.
All right, anything else? Looks like we need a motion to go into closed session.
We're gonna forego a closed session today. I mean, Jeff really wants this, we're.
We actually are done early tonight, we'll be so.
Late, I kicked it off.
Motion to adjourn?